Okay, hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Brad Gottschall. I am the Lower Paxton Township Manager. In typical fashion, I'm going to give a brief summary of this evening's agenda, particularly for the benefit of those who may be watching at home on television. This evening, the Board meets in business session, and they have a number of items on their agenda to include, first, under old business, the Board will take action to adopt Ordinance 24-08, which relates to the Township's stormwater management-related regulations. Under new business, the Board will take action to approve application for payment number nine with regard to the Brightville Park Improvements Project. After that, under subdivision and land development, the Board will take action to approve the declaration of consolidation of previously subdivided lots. That will be explained a little further in layman's terms, hopefully. Under improvement guarantees, then next, the Board will take action to approve the improvement guarantees, take action to pay township and authority bills, and then finally hear any last announcements. And with all that said, members of the Board are taking their seats, and we will get to business in a brief moment. Thank you very much.
I'd like to call the meeting of the Lower Paxton Township Board of Supervisors Business Board. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Supervisor Judd.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes from the June 18, 2024, meeting and the July 2, 2024, meeting. Any questions from the Board? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before we came out here this evening, we had Budget Workshop, which was open to the public at 5:30, and then at 6:30, we had our executive session, which we receive information from the Township Manager and the Assistant Manager, and we will be meeting in an executive session afterwards for information. Public comment, is there anybody here who would like to speak under public comment? Yes. All I ask is when you come forward, please give your name and your address, please.
John Packer.
Excuse me, you want to turn on the mic? I don't think it's on. There should be a green button on at the bottom.
Okay. I think it's on now. Good? Can you hear me? No?
No.
John Packer, 5723 Kenwood Avenue. I was here for the Sewer Authority meeting last week, and I received a letter, you know, today in the mail with somewhat of an update, I guess, on, you know, what's going on in the Kenwood-Meadowbrook area. I'm sure most of you have received some emails from me over the past several days prior to the holiday weekend, some in narrative form, some in picture form, been a little bit of everything. During that meeting, I got a little upset and continue to be somewhat upset with Mr. Weaver and his action or inaction, especially at that meeting. When I asked Chairman Blaine, you know, he's a volunteer, and obviously, he knows what's going on, but he's not the boots on the ground. And I asked for somebody that was present to stand up and explain more directly, that was directly involved, what was going on. And Mr. Blaine looked at Mr. Weaver, and Mr. Weaver sat there silently, essentially sitting on his hands. And in one of my emails, I called for his resignation, and if that was not tendered, that the Board of Supervisors would take under consideration looking into his continued employment with the Township. I just feel that there's been somewhat of a colossal failure on this project. I do appreciate, Mrs. Lindsay, your call the other day, you know, after some of those emails. So, you know, it helped answer some questions, and I'll try and keep this pretty brief, and I don't really expect an answer on some of this stuff. But a lot of what was said was, you know, that the contract, the contract, there's issues with the contract. And I'm looking over, like, again, some of these dates, and one of the big issues, they say, was utilities. Well, I drove through the neighborhood where I live, Kenwood, up to Meadowbrook, through that area, and I didn't go through everywhere. You have Cricket Lane, Devonshire Heights, that I didn't even go, I just kind of went the immediate area. It encompasses somewhere in the vicinity of 175 homes. In that drive, I counted up the number of areas where the concrete work needs to be done with the curbing, sidewalk, people's driveways, whatever, and I came to a rough number of 71. Okay? So there's 71 different areas that need attention, at a minimum. That's only what I went through. I'm certain there's more on Beaver Road and other places in that area. So we were advised that there was an extension given, and the root cause of the extension was because of utility work. I guess one of my questions and concerns is, is that utility work affecting every one of those 71-plus areas that need work? Because it doesn't seem to me that that's the case. Much of this concrete work, I believe, you know, can be done and is not held up by any waiting on any utility, you know, to come in and do their, move their utility, or whatever it is they have to do so that the sewer work can continue. So I guess that's my first question, is, you know, what essentially is the utility work holding up?
I know over in Cloverdale and Kenwood, the utility work is holding up the stormwater.
Okay.
Mr. Gottschall, do you know about Devonshire Heights, Beaver?
I'm not sure relative to the specific question as it stands to what exactly the utility relocation is holding up, but I will, because I am actually even further removed from the project than with Mr. Weaver, not saying that defensively, I'm just stating the fact. The, a little bit of an issue here with taking a look at specific houses or specific areas where specific things need to be done yet, like curbing or concrete work, and I don't know if this was explained, I'm just trying to recall the meeting, I wasn't there, the video, whether or not this was explained at the authority meeting, but essentially, what has happened here in this project, and I'm just putting this in very simplistic terms today for this edification, but the Township has a contract with a contractor, and it provides a deadline date. And up until that deadline date, the contractor is permitted to take his or her employees and move them, you know, to any other project that they may have going on. So it's going to seem, and I'm sure it has seemed throughout the project here in Lower Paxton, that there may be periods of time where work just simply isn't being done. And there, and I hate to say this this way, but to that specific point, unfortunately, there is nothing we can do, there is nothing that we can do to require the contractor to pull his people back to our project to get things done as we see them just laying there, because that contractor just is looking at the deadline date.
Right. Okay, so that, so as to the deadline date with your extension, my kind of follow-up or in relation to that is, so is that your extension extending all work that they have to do, or is it only work that is related to the utilities? Because I don't see a holdup on the sidewalk, and I get, I understand what you're saying, they can go somewhere else and work, but if you just gave them an extra 60 days for the entire project, who's holding their feet to the fire? You know, is, are there penalties? What is the incentive for them to even come back and do it if you granted them another 60 days? I see what's, if it's out of their control with the utilities, that's one thing, but if they only have one crew of three or four guys that are going around, and it's not sufficient, that's another issue, and that October 1st deadline, to me, should stand, not a December 1st deadline.
It's a completely valid point.
Well, and this is Brad, I'm just sorry, because this was a long authority meeting that we had, and it is a question I asked, knowing that the utility work is holding up the bulk of the project, but I asked, how does that specifically affect the curbing and the sidewalks? Now, for all these 70-some properties you were identifying, do they have all the laterals done?
As far as I know, the laterals are done, but, you know.
The laterals are all done, from what I'm hearing, from what we've been back and forth with Mr. Weaver, that the Cloverdale and Kenwood and Timberland, that the PP, they're waiting on PPNL come out, to come out to move those utilities to do the stormwater work. Once that happens and the stormwater work is done, then they come in and they do the sidewalks and the curbs. Sam, you were there, are we right?
That's what I understand, Madam Chair. It might just be really focused on mobilization efforts to finish the contract, because, again, we still do have a month, a little less than a month, until October 1st does hit for that initial contract date.
Right.
It could be this work we're talking about in specific, could be complete by then, and then just pending the other work, it's tough to say based on mobilization.
So you can't give me a, everything has been extended to December 1st, or only portions are, you know, given that extension to, you know, to finish the work, some of the work?
My understanding is that everything must be finished by December the 1st, and now we, we're almost positive that the second coat will not be put on.
Right.
As far as the asphalt, but the first coat will be put on, you know, for the wintertime. So that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm hearing.
The question was, does the extension cover everything?
Right, and I'm saying yes.
It does, yeah.
I'm saying yes.
In the contract, it doesn't signify, but Mr. Hines, I think, was going to help us.
Yeah, maybe, Mr. Hines, you can help us on that.
He's with HRG, the engineer, stormwater engineer.
Yeah, thank you. I was going to introduce myself. Jason Hines, I'm the stormwater engineer for the authority. And kind of the way the contract is written, there's two important completion dates. One is classified as the substantial completion date, which is essentially when all the utility work needs to be complete, the sanitary sewer, the storm sewer work, that's the date that was extended until October 1st. The final completion date is when all work needs to be completed. So that's when yards need to be restored, paving needs to be completed, any punch list items that are left over from that initial substantial completion date, they would need to be completed by that final completion of December 1st. So that's kind of the distinction between the two.
So Jason, my question is, they were given a letter today with a timeline, okay? I did read that letter, so it does have a timeline.
Somewhat, yes.
Right. So are we hearing from PPNL? Are they going to be there next week, the following week? Have we heard anything from them?
We haven't gotten a recent update as of this week. The latest that we had heard was that there's, there's three work orders essentially to complete the relocations that need to be performed. One of the, one of the work orders has been completed, the other two are in process. So we're hopeful that it's going to be sooner than later, but PPNL hasn't given us a definitive date yet.
Okay. Because I did ask the question when I was out there on Thursday, you know, when you're working with these utilities, you can't put it in today and expect them to be there tomorrow. Sometimes it's a month or two. And they said the ones on Kenwood were put in way ahead of time. Unfortunately, just the other week, they found the one on Cloverdale. They went, you know, started digging, and the line wasn't where it was supposed to be, so that is the one that they, the last one that they put in that they have to, they have to move. So at least we have a communication with everybody now, and, you know, please feel free to contact the Township. I know Mr. Gottschall has been in contact with Mr. Weaver, and I think tomorrow, HRG and, I'm not too sure, is it somebody from Doley are meeting?
I don't believe that HRG is involved in that meeting.
Okay, it said engineer.
Internally.
Okay. It said engineer, so, okay. Okay. All right, but keep, please keep in touch with us, we are out there, and I'm thinking, from what I'm hearing, Mr. from what I'm hearing, Mr. Gutt shall, that Mr. Weaver's going to be on site, and he's going to be out there checking things out, so. So please keep, keep in contact with us, and we're going to be keeping in contact with you communication-wise.
Okay, very good. Thank you for your time.
Okay, all right. Any issues, please feel free to give us a call.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming. Is there anybody else for public comment? Mr. Miller?
William Miller, 4311 Cresview Road. I wanted to thank the supervisors for the Devonshire Road repair, so that our first responders and others weren't hitting those heavy bumps there. That was, it's a lot better.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
It is good. The other, the other comment I have is coming up, I don't know if I should speak now at 2408, I just have a couple of questions about, I read that, I read that document, it's quite huge, on stormwater.
Okay, yeah, if you can do that under a comment, we would appreciate that, under that agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else? Okay, chairman and board member comments. Does anybody have anything? Been a quiet week. Okay, I don't have anything tonight, very unusual. Managers report.
Likewise, Madam Chair, I have no official report this evening.
Okay. All business, we have action to adopt ordinance 24-08, amending ordinance, wow, 10-06, the stormwater management ordinance. Mr. Hines?
Thank you. For those of you that were at the authority board meeting last week, this should look pretty familiar, this was included in the packet as an update. And just to, just to give a little bit of background, when the township was issued their MS4 permit by DEP, there was a model ordinance that DEP developed that had requirements in it for MS4 communities, and all the MS4 permit holders needed to show consistency with that ordinance as part of their permit obligations. So the main reason for this update before you tonight is to incorporate the requirements from that ordinance into the existing stormwater ordinance. In addition, we recognize that there were a few other, I'll say things that we wanted to incorporate since we were making the updates at this time, some of the things that happened with the comprehensive zoning ordinance rewrite, the requirements in the old ordinance that seemed more appropriate to go onto the stormwater, so we took advantage and moved those at this time. We also wanted to acknowledge that LPTA, the authority, was assuming ownership of the public storm sewer assets, so we incorporated language to account for that. And maybe just to give a little bit more background, this is not a complete overhaul or a comprehensive rewrite of the ordinance, it merely is an update. And the ordinance, it's still based on the framework of that Dauphin County Act 167 model ordinance from back in 2009. And as, as the new MS4 permit cycles are kind of brought to light as we go into the future, it's anticipated that these ordinance updates are going to become pretty common as new permits are issued. Just to give you a little bit of history on where we've come with the updates, we started the process working with staff back in April of 2023. It's been a collaborative effort with a lot of back and forth to make sure that we got the language kind of where we want it, so we could bring it to the board for adoption. Early August, we had the acting solicitor review the stormwater ordinance updates. From a legal perspective, incorporated his review comments. It was advertised in the Sun as required by the second-class township code on August 1st. It wasn't required, but just for general awareness purposes and desired input, we did share the ordinance with the Tri-County Regional Planning Commission, and we also presented it to the Township Planning Commission at their August meeting. The update was given to the authority board last week, and here we are tonight with the presentation for adoption at the supervisors' meeting. In addition to those more formal reviews, we did post the ordinance to the township website on August 2nd, so that it was able to be viewed by the, by the public and comments could be solicited. We did not receive any, any comments from any of those reviews or outside agencies. Just to give a summary of some of the main updates, I can walk through each of those individually here. If there are questions or a desire to dig into the actual language, just let me know, and we can, we can bring that up on the screen here. So the first main update came in section 170, 105, and that was to memorialize the criteria for when a township stormwater management permit is necessary. That's a process that has been ongoing, really since the permit applications were developed by the township. This just kind of defines that in the stormwater ordinance. Section 170, 111, erroneous permits, so it defines that a permit, if it's approved based on false or erroneous information given by the applicant, that permit is subject to being pulled, revoked, and voided. Article 17112 pertains to waivers, so if there's a specific requirement in the ordinance that poses undue hardship on an applicant, the township has the ability to waive that requirement, and that's very much based on the language from the municipality's planning code. Article 17201, which is the definitions within the ordinance, we updated those based on the county, the model ordinance. We took like other township ordinances and the stormwater fee credit policy to make sure that we had consistency throughout those documents as much as possible. We also added definitions for MS4 O&M agreement and the township stormwater management permit, because those were not in the previous version. Article 17302, exemptions and modifications. For those that are familiar with the ordinance, this is the table that outlines when you're adding amount of new impervious surface to your property, kind of what the requirements are for submissions to the township. That table was updated to account for the stormwater management permit applications. Article 17502, which is design criteria for stormwater facilities, we added subsection G, essentially relocated it from the zoning ordinance. It's a section that outlines the requirements for landscaping of detention basins. It seemed more appropriate to go in the stormwater ordinance in this section. Additionally, we added subsection P, which is related to permeable porous pervious pavement and pavers. Township staff has been receiving a lot of requests for pervious patios, areas around pools, things like that, so we wanted to make sure we had language in there that allowed them to enforce the standards related to those items. Article 17602, the stormwater site plan and report contents, this was added also to make review of the permit applications for staff easier, just a tabular notes on the plan outlining the existing and proposed impervious coverage associated with these site plans. Article 17608, which pertains to record drawings and as-built plans, there, I think in the past, there's been a tendency to think those terms are synonymous, they're actually different things in certain instances, so we tried to do a better job of defining those and indicating when they would be required with a project. Article 17802, maintenance responsibilities, as I mentioned before, with LPTA taking over the public storm sewer, language is added to add them as a party for future dedications if they're able to accept dedications in the future of stormwater assets. We also, this was advice of the township solicitor requiring submission of HOA budgets to demonstrate inclusion of funding for stormwater O&M, so essentially making sure that when these assets are supposed to be owned and maintained by private organizations, there are funds set aside for them to operate and maintain them the way the plan says they're intended to. There was also language added identifying responsible parties for that O&M if it's not clearly identified in the stormwater site plan. So really, the only instance that that may pertain is if there's a deemed approval and that language isn't on the plan. So there's some added protections with adding that, that language. Article 17803 pertaining to those O&M agreements, language was added, requiring that up-to-date contact information for the parties that are responsible for those O&M agreements is provided to the township. 17804, dedication of stormwater control facilities, that was a section that was added in collaboration with the authority to help incorporate some of their standards for storm sewer dedications. Additionally, 17805 was an item added with the authority's review. Essentially, that refers to the Authority's Act and the Authority's ability to update their rules and regulations in accordance with the Act. Article 17901, the schedule of inspections, this was language that came right out of the DEP model ordinance, requiring minimum frequencies for best management inspections and documentation requirements. Article 17902, right of entry, the way that the previous ordinance was written, there was concern that it may seem to suggest trespass onto properties for inspection, documentation of stormwater management facilities. That language has been adjusted to avoid those concerns. Article 171004, suspension and revocation, this language was added to address procedures for correcting any permit and plan violations that became knowledge of the township. Article 171005, penalties, this was language that was also suggested by the acting solicitor, and it was adjusted for conformance with the second-class township code whenever there's violations of the stormwater management ordinance that may occur. And finally, article 171101, the list of prohibited discharges and connections, we updated the list of authorized discharges to the MS4 to mirror what is provided in the DEP model ordinance. And that's, that's the summary of the main updates.
Thank you, Jason. Does any board members have any questions?
Repeat all that.
Yeah, public questions? Yep, sure.
The questions I had might be on the maintenance. Over by Pep Boys, there's a catch basin there, looks like a forest. These have to be maintained. So who does the maintenance? They keep hacking away at the one by Carnes, and they keep it under control. I went down to Straywind Farms two years ago, a friend of mine was complaining, I went down to see him, and the stench off that retention pond was brutal. There were breeding ground for mosquitoes, I just read the article today, out of New Hampshire, the guy, you know, three viral infections from the mosquitoes, there were breeding ground, and I just feel that they, they need to be mowed and maintained when possible, and there needs to be something to control the, you know, there are, there are approved at our pond, we have, a place comes out of Chambersburg, they put in the proper chemicals, everything's done, it's permitted, everything's legal schmiggle. So what, I just want to, I'm just concerned about just, you know, insects bothering people, but more being a vector of disease and, you know, odor and things like that, so, you know. We're at a different time, I mean, you didn't used to have these problems to this degree. So I just thought I'd throw that out there as to the maintenance of these aesthetically and health-wise. Thank you.
Jason, you want to answer that?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great comment, and the ordinance is written to try and prevent those situations from occurring. If you are seeing that, I would encourage you to definitely let the township know. I know that they, they're always either in contact with us or directly going out and inspecting those facilities when there's issues, and trying to work with the property owners to rectify them. Anytime one of those facilities is proposed on a new plan that comes in, responsibilities for that ownership and maintenance needs to be very detailed on the plan, and then they also need to enter into that operations and maintenance agreement that I referenced, that actually gets recorded along with the plan and is a covenant that runs with the property. It's, it's good in perpetuity even as the property exchanges hands and ownership, since it is a covenant that runs with the land.
Who would call, neck or a man don't have it? Who would that be, Brad?
Probably Randy Allen.
Yeah, it would go to Randy, but.
Just stormwater.
Community development, though.
Okay. Okay, so was your question answered, Mr. Miller?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Will it affect me? I don't know, but I mean, it's affecting people already.
Right.
It's benefiting people, so I did something. There's going to be more and more of these. I mean, there's two with a guard at 4301 Elstoun.
Yeah, if I can jump in real quick, I mean, this is not the first time that we've talked about this in the last two months, I mean, we've discussed this, I don't think you were here, but, you know, because we're looking at different neighborhoods, and this has come into question, well, you know, who's responsible for this? That's why the homeowner thing about the, you know, 170-802 is kind of, you know, it's going to be more protection for us, because we've had this discussion in the last two months about, you know, about these retention basins and everything being appropriately cared for. So, yeah, it is a concern. Thanks for bringing it up.
Okay, all right. With that said, do we have a motion to adopt ordinance 24-08, amending ordinance 10-06, the stormwater management ordinance?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hines. New business, we have action to approve application for payment number nine from Regal Inc. for the Brightville Park Playground Project. Mr. Gutt shall, and this is the last payment.
Absolutely, it is, yes. It's the last payment on a very good project. This application for payment is in the amount of $10,552.25 payable to our contractor, Regal Incorporated. If the board has any questions, I'd be happy to help try to answer those, but it is, it has been reviewed by township staff, and it is appropriate for the township to adopt this, this evening.
Okay, any questions, board members?
It's really the last one, huh?
It's, it's what it said in the packet. It's the last payment.
I think I've heard that before.
Probably.
$703,483 is what we paid Regal for Brightville Park. Any questions? Any comments from the public? Yes?
Just real quick, it's really nice down there. The question I have, and I've heard from some other people, is there any plan to put lighting at that playground area? I mean, to get some lighting, you know, from the basketball courts and stuff?
Basketball courts, yeah.
But it's, you know, obviously, it's younger kids and stuff playing down there, so, my grandson plays in the rec basketball league, so we were there a lot, and I, you know, just hearing some of the parents and stuff, they love it, but just thought I'd bring it up, that I didn't know if there was any plan.
I don't think there was anything on the master plan for lighting there.
Yeah, unfortunately, great, great question. The, our, the playground is, the Parks and Rec Board has a regulation requiring that it be closed, you know, at dawn, so at dusk, yeah. And so the, the lighted portions, you know, you can't continue to play, of course, basketball into the evening, but, and that's why we have the lights there, but there was no plan to, to put lighting by the playground.
Okay, and if you haven't been there, it's a beautiful park, absolutely, and it's another disability park that we have here in Lower Paxton Township, so. Okay, do I have a motion to adopt, motion for payment, excuse me, for number nine from Regal Inc. for the Brightville Park Playground Project in the amount of $10,552. Playground Project in the amount of $10,552.25.
So moved.
You'll happily make that motion?
You'll happily make it, okay. Second?
Second.
Okay, you got it? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's paid off, good. Okay, subdivision and land development. We have action to approve the declaration of consolidation of previously subdivided lots, Plan 24-012, at 6214 and 6018, excuse me, not 62, 6014 and 6018 Lingelstown Road. Mr. Gutshahl, you going to handle this one?
Yeah, sure. Madam Chair, members of the board, this one's fairly straightforward, and the board has from time to time take action to consolidate previously, previously subdivided lots. In layman's terms, that means, you know, there are two lots here currently, which the requister is looking to have consolidated into one parcel. And I do believe Mr. and Mrs. Nos or just, okay, the applicants are here this evening if, if the board has any specific questions on the matter, but this has been reviewed by staff, and it is in order for the board to adopt this evening.
Did Mr. and Mrs. Nos, did you want to come up to the podium, or you're okay?
Would like to ask to answer.
Okay, if the board has any, does the board have any questions on the properties?
I'm curious, what's the plan once you consolidate the two lots?
The plan is.
Yeah. Yeah, if you could come to the microphone and give your name and your address, please.
Patty and Bob Nos, 4705 Earl Drive. The plan is to consolidate to meet dimensional requirements, so we can make improvements. Our intention is, in the next year or so, to construct a house on that property, a small home on that property.
Okay, single-family home?
Yes.
Okay, so I was there today, and there's two prop, there's two, there's a structure on one lot and a structure on the other lot. Okay, so are you looking to construct in the back area?
No, yeah, the front. What we are intending to do, if you, if you're looking at it, the house that sets back a little bit, the building, it's not even a house, we're going to just add to the front of that.
Okay, where you have all the parking?
Parking, yes.
Okay, okay. Because when you said that, I was like, no, wait, there's two structures there, I was there today, so.
It's really honestly an addition, is what it is, but we're calling it like an actual house. The other piece to that is that two properties have a conjoined parking lot, so they already share a parking lot. So our hope was then to kind of make it one single family home.
Great. Okay. Any other questions from the board? We're good? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the declaration of consolidation?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, congratulations.
Thank you so much, you guys.
We have the improvement guarantees, there are seven of them, I think. Let's see, wait till it comes up here. Whirlshire Estates, Phase 1, 5875 Avon Lane, Avis Lane, 958 Pfeifer's Lane, Wise Market Subdivision, Raising Cane, 6302 Plowman Road, and 65, and Otomok's Phase 1. Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the improvement guarantees?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the payment of bills of Lower Paxton Township and Lower Paxton Township Authority. I have a motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
Second?
Aye, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next week, we will be meeting at 5:30 for budget. And I'm trying to think. Okay, that'll be at 5:30 September the 10th, we'll have another budget workshop, and then following that same evening, we'll have a workshop here in this room at 7 o'clock.
Will that bu, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Will that budget workshop be open to the public like it was tonight?
Yes, all of our budget workshops are open to the public, yes, at 5:30, and they're in Room 174. That'll be at 5:30, and then at 7 o'clock, we'll have a workshop meeting here in this room. Any comments from the board? Anything from the public? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.